It's six o'clock now. Call the meeting to order. If you will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robert Basio?
I don't want to complain before I pray, but when I came in here, I had a sharp pain immediately shoot down my leg. Then I realized that the Allen Park pin that I had had lost its cap. And you know when you get angry for a quick second? You just want to kind of take it out on something. And I thought, I should throw this away. I took one look at it and I saw that flag. And I said, you know, this nation isn't perfect, but I love it. And I looked at the words, city of Allen Park, and I said, you know, this city isn't perfect, but I love it. I can't throw this away. I just have to find a, something to protect me. And so today, I want to ask you to pray for a city and a nation that is not perfect and maybe needs our prayers more than ever. But I hope you love it like I do. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this chance to come together and thank you for these great leaders that you've put literally and leadershipally in front of us. And I'm praying for them today to have wisdom and guidance, strength and health. And Lord, they represent a city that you care about even more than any compassion that we can show. So, Lord, would you help this city and those that may be hurting today to bring comfort and peace to their hearts? And Lord, some of these problems, we can't begin to solve, but maybe together, we can begin to heal. And Lord, I'm praying for those who serve this city from every position and everywhere. The little things that they do matter so much. I pray safety and protection, health and strength. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, if you'll take the roll call, please.
Councilman Marcos has asked to be excused. Councilman Blevins?
Here.
Councilman Schlack?
Present.
Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Pro-Tan Lally?
Here.
And Mayor McLeod?
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlack?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of August 22?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius, second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now, we have presentations from the Allen Park Beautification Commission of Residential and Business Beautification Awards.
My name is Kathy Collier, and I am the chairperson of the Beautification Commission. We are before you this evening to present the Residential and Business Beautification Awards. But before I hand it off to Kyle, I just want to say a few thank yous. First off, I want to say thank you, Mayor McLeod, for reestablishing the Beautification Commission three years ago. Our commission is comprised of five volunteer commissioners. And including myself, we have Kyle Walagora, who is the vice chair, who has been on the commission for three years. We have Maureen Stotter, who has been on the commission for three years. We have Don Graham, who has been on the commission for three years. And we have Ed Wurzbacher, who has been on the commission for a year. I personally want to say thank you to those commissioners who have developed and implemented programs, who have been a mentor to our student commissioners, and who have attended and worked our cleanups this year. I appreciate your teamwork and I appreciate all of your hard work. I now I now want to acknowledge Deb Zettel, who is the Executive Assistant for the City. Deb has taken on the role of our city liaison, and she has helped us a lot by assisting us and guiding us this year. Earlier in the year, Deb took on the responsibility of reorganizing the Adopt a Flower Bed Program. She, along with all the participants who have adopted flower beds this year, have truly made that program a huge success. Next, Nancy Nick, Chairperson of the Historical Commission. Once again, the Historical Commission partnered with the Beautification Commission, and we held the parking lot fundraiser during the street fair. We appreciate the Historical Commission working with us this year, and we look forward to working with them on many projects in the future. And finally, our cleanups. We began this year with our big Good Neighbor Saturday cleanup. We've held two cleanups since then. Our next cleanup will be held on Saturday, September 30th. From 10:00 until noon, we will be meeting in the community center parking lot, and the DDA will be providing our volunteers food and beverages at the end. On behalf of the Beautification Commission, I want to thank all community members who have shown up to our cleanups and volunteered their time. I also want to say a special thank you to Mayor McLeod, to Councilman Marcos, Councilman Blevins, and Councilman Schlack. We appreciate your support, and we appreciate you volunteering to help clean up and beautify our city. And I'm now going to hand it over to Kyle to present our beautification awards.
Thank you and good evening. So how we're going to, with this procedure is that we're, I'm basically going to call the name and the street, um, street name, they'll go present, get their award and their plaque, and then we'll get a group picture at the very end. So let's start off with our homeowners awards. First one is on Meyer Avenue with Kimberly and Bob Musso.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Don't go anywhere. No, 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 wait.
Don't go anywhere. We're going to do a group, big group picture at the end, so yeah. And if I butcher any of the names, I do sincerely apologize for that as well. So the next one is on Rose Avenue, Christine Graff and Michael Graff.
Christine, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
That famous landscaper from Rose. Thank you so very much.
The next award winner is on Meyer Avenue, Jerry and Paula Bentley.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congrats.
The next award winner is on Asher Avenue, Michelle Lidrick and Ed Camery. Next one is on Quant Avenue with Ray and Sandy McGusson.
Thank you very much.
Next award recipient is on Garfield Avenue, and it goes to Mara Garfloufis. The next award recipient is on Manor Avenue by Jim Rivera.
Thanks, I'll.
Thank you for the work.
The next award recipient is on Park Avenue with Meredith and Adam Schiffer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort.
The next award recipient is on Russell Avenue, Jahan Hamuda. The next award recipient is on Holger Avenue, belongs to Mike and Stephanie Barnard. Barnard, thank you. Told you I was going to butcher some names.
Congratulations.
All right, so now we are going to announce our beautification awards for our business owners. So the first one is for Allen Park Family Chiropractic.
Thank you so much.
The next award recipient for the business awards is The Park on Park Avenue. Who is unable to attend at this time. The next award recipient is Hopper McMillan on Reek Road.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next award for the business owners is Smith Insurance Group. And our final award is to Retirement Strategies of Michigan on Reek Road, but I believe he was, she was unable to attend today. So once So once again, thank you all for coming to cleanups and supporting the Beautification Commission. And yeah, let's get a great group photo and thanks again.
Thank you.
Where do you want to get them?
Want to do the, yeah, over the dais? Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Do you want to do a whole?
Yes.
Let's do a whole group. Yes. How about getting the big shirts? Would that be okay? Yeah.
Tell us what you need.
He does a lot of that.
I'm short, so I'm cool with that.
What did I have to go? All the way back. Dr. Is it?
I'm sure. I'm cool with that.
Wait a minute, somebody blink.
There might be a few.
Man wasn't full of that.
No. I'm going to dunk.
One more?
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate what you're doing to your homes and, uh, and your businesses. Well, you know, I, and I don't know if anyone knows, but they've got cards that periodically just driving around, I guess they're just leaving at home saying, you know, thank you, uh, we had America and Bloom here, and they drove around the city, and I guess they left little cards. Uh, so, yeah. Oh, wow. Well, thank you. You too.
Thank you. Now they pile up. The light switch was saved.
I think we can now proceed, um, get into some organizational business. And the first part of the agenda regarding that is a proclamation for Rail Safety Week, which is September 18th through the 24th of 2023, and this is for CN Railroad. Whereas 2,194 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 803 personal injuries and were responsible for 274 fatalities in the United States during 2022, and whereas 1,208 pedestrian trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States resulting in 658 pedestrians being killed and another 550 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights of way during 2022. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Rail Safety Week. Therefore, I, Gail B. McLeod, Mayor, do hereby attest my full support proclaiming September 18th to 24th, 2023 as National Rail Safety Week, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan be affixed this 12th day of September, 2023. Second order of business under organizational business is the appointment to the Housing Commission of Cheryl McFarland for a term that will expire 12/31/23. She is filling a vacancy. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. If you will step forward to be sworn in.
Hello, Council. Mayor.
All right. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. You don't have to repeat after me, but I do ask at the end, you say, I do, I swear, or I affirm, whatever you feel most comfortable with. Okay? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of Housing Commissioner to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I swear.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you might need a copy, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheryl, for stepping up and volunteering to fill that position. And now we come to the City Administrator's Report.
Hard Rock Concrete, the contractor for Rosedale Boulevard, is working to address the punchless items regarding the sprinklers and restoration. Reek Road is closed between Goddard and Allen Road except for local traffic. The new water main work will be finished in the next seven to 10 days. The storm sewer installation will continue for the next two weeks. Road removal and replacement is scheduled to begin near Goddard Road by the end of September with the weather permitting. Paris Avenue concrete work has been completed, sod and restoration work will continue, will start this week and should be completed within the next two weeks. Savon Cement finished the concrete repairs around Arno School prior to the start of school. They are now moving to a few other areas throughout the city. Mark would also like to thank Mario and his crew for starting very early last Tuesday morning to make sure that the barricades were removed before the buses and the students arrived. As Al's Asphalt completed the joint sealing on Ekor's Road between Pelham and Roosevelt, they will finish the area west of Allen Road, Allen Road to Arno from Beatrice to Han, Han Four Avenue by the end of this week, weather permitting. Pavement marking on several major roads near the schools were completed prior to Labor Day weekend. The Southfield Service Drive between Outer Drive and Oakwood Boulevard received some asphalt pavement repairs, particularly the right lane near Lowe's. Thank goodness. The asphalt pa, the asphalt paving of three DDA alleys started yesterday. North Allen Road, the west side between Anne Avenue and Warwick Avenue, North Allen Road, the west side between Hanover and Anne, and then the south side, east side alley between Astor Avenue and Inglewood Avenue. Bacabella, Millward, Pretty, Pretty Family, and Jackroar Park had spray and mulch placed in around the play structures, thanks again to a grant from the Allen Park Rotary, the Rotary Club. The baseball field at Bacabella Park was upgraded by home field turf using laser grading, realigning the bases, installing a new mound and home plate, and adding 100 tons of new material and new top dressing. There's more. The city is hosting a styrofoam recycling event at the DPS facility, 24,000 Outer Drive, this Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. each day. The Maine and Michigan Festival will be Friday, September 22nd and Saturday, September 23rd. The Fire Department is planning to host their 2023 Open House on Sunday, October 8th from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Shred Day will be Saturday, October 28th. The event will be held in the parking lot off Philamine behind Prestige Banquet Hall, Covlers, and PNC from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And finally, the following employees reached a milestone with, in years of service with the city, Jeff O'Reilly, the Fire Department, 25 years, on October 27th, and Brian Markovich, the Police Department, 10 years of service, September 23rd.
We hope no one left their windows open.
I didn't know it was supposed to rain, but it was really distracting.
I think [laughing] You have a motion to accept and file the Administrator's Report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins, supported by Mr. Schlack. Any questions? See, we have also some additional information attached regarding the senior alliance programs, and I think that will be posted in our lobbies, made available for residents. Hearing no further questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now we come to public comments. Anyone may come up and speak for four minutes. All we ask is that you give your name and a speech, do not give us your full address.
Hello, Mayor and Council. It's an Estimer Melbourne Avenue. Congratulations to those retirements that we just mentioned. Also, thanks to the Beautification Commission and this year's recipients, both the residential and the businesses. Thanks for helping keep it Allen Park beautiful. Congratulations and welcome to the new resident commissioner, Cheryl McFarland. I've had an opportunity to meet her. She's a lovely lady, and I think she'll be an outstanding commissioner. Welcome back, students, teachers, administrators, coaches. Welcome. I've seen a few of the coaches that happen to be on city council right now, uh, out there working it. So thank you so much, and have a safe and happy year. And great job to Mayor McLeod on the State of the City address. Very informative, and it was a great, great thing. I appreciate you. Lastly, I have a comment or a question that you can hopefully answer in your comments regarding the portable or mobile generator stations that we're seeing in a couple of areas, specifically Allen and more. As I know the mayor knows, because her and I have talked about it, that area, including where my business is, and I live in that area, we've had a series of outages, more than most of the other areas in Allen Park. So I'm wondering if that's a possible fix, if that's what they're working on. If you all have any information on that, I'd appreciate it. With that, thank you very much.
My name's Thomas Veeble. I live on Ray Avenue. I can hear you guys real good tonight. Usually on my TV, I got up to 100. Nobody is listening or whatever the deal is. And if something can be done about that, it'd be a pleasant thing, please, in that. I have another thing. I have a sister that lives on Philamine, and the street has been repaired a year ago, Philamine, and her sprinklers had four sprinkler heads. She only has two now, and it leaks. So I have the zone shut off. I disconnected the wire. And I've been trying to, since mid-June, trying to get somebody to call me or to talk to me about what they can do to hook this up. It's almost time to blow out the lines, basically, in a way, before they get to it and that. And if there's any way that they can get, I left them my number and to contact me instead of her, basically, and that's that. But I, I get no response. And then another thing, I have a next door neighbor, he's moving out, and there's a tree that's dead by him. If somebody can come and take a look at it and see what they can do, because there's a lot of little children around there that could get hurt if this thing ever decides to fall. And basically, and I have, I did call in and even stopped at the office, basically, for potholes. And what potholes I turned in, not repaired. And what it took to get potholes repaired, so that's it. And thank you. I'd like to make mention of a fundraiser that was held this past Sunday at Post 9283 in Southgate. It was a motorcycle rally that began there in Southgate and rode through Riverview, Trenton, excuse me, Riverview, Trenton, Wyandotte, River Rouge, Melvindale, and finally at our site in Allen Park. We had approximately 50 riders and passengers, which was very successful for our first rally. Those mayors from those cities, offices
If somebody can come and take a look at it and see what they can do, because there's a lot of little children around there that could get hurt if this thing ever decides to fall. And basically, and I have, I did call in, and even stopped at the office, basically, for potholes. And what potholes I turned in, not repaired. And what it took to get potholes repaired, so that's it. And thank you.
Richard Gattigan, Vietnam Veterans Memorial and Beyond. I'd like to make mention of a fundraiser that was held this past Sunday at Post 9283 in Southgate. It was a motorcycle rally that began there in Southgate and rode through Riverview, Trenton, excuse me, Riverview, Trenton, Wyandotte, River Rouge, Melvindale, and finally at our site in Allen Park. We had approximately 50 riders and passengers, which was very successful for our first rally. Those mayors from those cities' offices were visited, and we had two participants. We had the Mayor Swift from Riverview, and we had Mayor Maurice from Melvindale that rode. They're bike riders. The ride did end at our site, in which we had a group picture taken, and it will be provided to the city when we get those pictures back. Our ride did culminate at Knights of Columbus. We had a nice lunch there, provided by them. They were our host with hamburgers and hot dogs. We had several city businesses provide food. Prestige Banquet Facility, Primos, and Post 409 Ladies Auxiliary provided some as well. And we had a dessert that was discounted by Maze Bakery. And there were 11 cities, excuse me, 11 businesses in and around Allen Park that provided gifts for our raffle, which was very successful as well. Our gross was $1,671, and we don't have a net yet. We will have that in another week, and that, those funds will be provided to the city when we get that. So, all in all, we had a good turnout and a successful ride.
And everyone was safe.
And everyone was safe. And thanks for, Chief Egan, for providing communication with all the city police departments. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else coming forward, we will move on to the consent agenda, which consists this evening of purchasing actions and finance. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins. Second by Mr. Lally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We come to resolutions. Resolution one is to award the landscaping for the America in Bloom and Canadian National Rail Echo Connections from the Ground Up Grant for the Brand Park Vietnam Veterans and Beyond Memorial and the Champagne Park Blue Star Memorial to Dan Kays, in the amount of $28,557, with a 15% contingency of $4,283, with funds above the $25,000 grant reimbursement coming from account 101172. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Second by Mr. Valerius. Kyle?
Yes, so, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, in front of you is the Brand Park and Champagne Memorials that you've seen that work has started. The $25,000 will cover most of the costs from the grant reimbursement, and we did several, we reached out to several bids. I know Tom, Rob, and Mark reached out to several companies, and Dan Kays, Inc. came in in the lowest number. They've done restoration on Park Avenue. They do water main repairs, and they also did the DPS back by the pond. They did that restoration as well. And other companies that we put out for didn't want a bid, or they couldn't get it done in that timeframe. I know earlier, Councilman Blevins in the work session asked about the 10-15 date. Mark was trying to get done as soon as possible for weather breaks and changes, but also so we can try to wrap up most pieces that we're going to have done before the season is over. In addition to that, while we're talking about it, Mark said that the Champagne Park Memorial Sidewalk, it's been framed for a while. It'll be poured Thursday. Mario's going to pour that Thursday. And then Brand Park, he's going to meet out Mario, and they're going to start the construction on the Brand Park sidewalk on Monday, next week. And then the flagpole at Champagne will be put in in the next two to three weeks. And then Mark said for the contingency, he doesn't really know much of what the grading will be to get the final, once the cement's in, the grade, how much dirt they got to bring in, so they, just trying to play it by, once the grade's all set, that they handle that, so it looks nice.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Resolution two is to approve the SMART agreement, fiscal 2023-24 year, for municipal credits in the amount of $26,800, and community credits in the amount of $52,018. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Wants to talk about the SMART bus.
Smart guy.
Hey, fire up.
They played Michigan State this week. No, that was two weeks ago. They go to Notre Dame. Yeah, so, I think I still follow them. It's my alumni in me. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say, unfortunately, Pam and Wayne Smith aren't here, but I'd like to record it. Thank you to them for, what is about two weeks ago, they hosted us. We hosted them, they barbecued again for us at the back of the building, and they're hired, basically. So, I know they sprinkled the love around the city, but I want to publicly thank them, and I'll do it off the, hopefully they watch. So, the SMART bus credits, there's two. The municipal credits and the community credits, and they stagger on the shelf life. Reason they stagger is they don't want you to go and attack all the money in the same year, okay? But we're going to try that, because the shelf life on the community credits, you can take anywhere from buying tickets for the seniors, that we issue free to the seniors for transportation, or you can go all the way up to a capital purchase of vehicle. We've got an aging vehicle in the fleet right now. There's a criteria, either 70,000 miles or seven years, we're there on that one bus, on both criteria. So, we're going to try and use the community credits and municipal credits in combination to get a new bus for the transportation team. We're fortunate enough that Roy Shipman out of the garage underneath Tom's watch basically does the repairs. We just report him into SMART, so we can use these credits for that too, but it's been a lot less expensive for us doing it locally, instead of having to take it and take it out of the system longer, because if you take it to SMART, it's a longer process. So, we've been very fortunate in that regard. Municipal credits, the shelf life on them, one has two more years, the other one has just shy of, or one more year, the other one has just shy of two years. So, we want to spend the money, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Nice to know that we are keeping track of things.
Well, it's important, obviously. It's all budgeted to Mayor Gail McCloud, because the city gets, their state gets their budget, they transfer it down into the municipalities, the subs, if you will. So, this is probably the largest credit I've seen, probably in the seven years that I've been a full-time employee of the city. So, this is a lot of money that we can put to great use for our senior citizens.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution has been approved. Resolution three, to approve a pilot program with precision concrete cutting for city properties at a cost not to exceed $9,900. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Mr. Murray is going to come up and tell us about this pilot program.
Good evening. This pilot program is a cutting. Any trip hazard that we have on our city properties, parks, city properties, different things that's owned by the city, we're going to try to have this company come and cut the trip hazard out. It's not a shave, but they actually physically cut it to level each slab out that we have. And we're doing this to see how this is going to work out, and see if this is something possibly in the future that could be offered to our residents through a sidewalk program, if possible.
Questions, comments? Well, we hope it's successful on city property, and it's something that becomes an option for residents. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Resolution four, to approve Kennedy Industries of Wixom to repair a Wemco pump at the Allen Park Retention Basin in the amount of $36,467.50. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally, supported by Mr. Schleck. Murray?
Hello again. This is a pump at our retention basin that was purchased about four and a half years ago. Every three to four years, you should rebuild these pumps, since they run typically 24/7 for our sanitary system, to get our sanitary down to the DUO plant and be treated. Therefore, it's not running efficiently at this current time. Kennedy Industries has it. They've torn it down to see what it actually needs to be done, so with this price, there's no surprises either. And included is a three-year warranty under this price for them to repair it and take care of it for the next three years.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Resolution five is to accept the FEMA, or federal grant money, and to approve payment of up to $7,535.19, which is a 10% matching funds, for thermal imaging cameras, jaws of life, and various other needed extraction equipment. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins. Second by Mr. Valerius. Chief Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is a grant we were recently awarded and need to accept with your approval. We are moving toward all battery-powered tools and all of our fire trucks, when possible. This will be a set of battery-powered jaws of life and other extrication equipment. That means to help get people out of crushed cars, if you will, and it will allow us to remove gasoline-powered equipment, gasoline and generators, as well as gasoline-powered hydraulic pumps from our vehicles. In addition to that, there are thermal imagers on this grant, and the thermal imagers, they're surprisingly giving us a quantity of three, valued near $10,000 each, and they are going to go into both of our engines and our ladder truck, replacing two aged thermal imagers, one of which has a cracked screen, and the other of which is very, very old and doesn't work well at all. The resolution on these new ones are just amazing. And so, we will take those old ones, keep them in use on the rescue, and in maybe a chief's vehicle. Total on this grant, that we would be receiving above the 10%, is $75,351. And I should note, and this will lend itself to number six in a moment, Kerry Thompson wrote this grant for us. Again, that's the second one in a row that he's written at no charge, and he is a grant writer extraordinaire that I will explain a little bit more about in a moment. Any questions?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Resolution six is to approve the donation of our out-of-service ISI SCBA's, some old firefighting turnout gear, and some used out-of-service fire tools and appliances to the William D. Ford Technical Fire Academy. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
Through the chair. Through the chair. It was Schleck.
I'm sorry. That was Schleck and Valerius. My, somebody's been playing the trillabust here. Thank you.
So, thank you for the, accepting the number five. And so, you all helped us start this program for high school cadets. You know there's staffing shortages everywhere. Kerry Thompson and Josh Boonsie. Josh is an Allen Park resident and a former captain at Novi Fire. Kerry is a captain currently at the Royal Oak Fire Department. Both run this program. They both got teaching certificates and joined the Teachers Union for this, and Kerry will be retiring from the fire service in the fall and doing this full-time with the kids. Any Wayne County student, including Catholic schools and so forth, not just public schools, except for the city of Detroit proper, because they have their own funding, can join this program. And if you join in ninth grade, you'll get 60 college credits and an associate's degree in fire science by the time you graduate, as well as firefighter one, firefighter two, hazmat ops, and EMT basic, using this program. Ready to work when they come out at 12th grade with no college debt. It's a great program. They've only since improved it, and there's been a new announcement. Kerry was able to write a grant and get a training tower and a training building built for them, and it's going to be shared with the Westland Fire Department, just slightly off-site. So, he is full bore, full tilt into this. I met both Kerry and Josh at Staff and Command when we did that in 2016. The older appliances, the SCBA's, Kerry wrote a grant to get us the SCBA's about four or five months ago, and they're, they're not being used by us. They're just collecting dust, and the young kids need them to train on. And they, they work, but we need them all to be standardized. We can't mix and match when we're on a fire scene. And then the turnout gear, NFPA says after 10 years, it shouldn't be used by firefighters in structural firefighting. It's worn out, it's not safe. All of the gear that we'd be giving them is older than 10 years old or worn out, and some of the appliances, as we call them, the things that the water goes through on fire scenes, we've replaced all of that with more modern equipment over the years through either Deputy Chief O'Reilly, or Chief LaFond, or myself has replaced things. So, these are, again, items that are on the back shelf, and you get pennies on the dollar for them, and you try to scrap them or sell them, so this will allow them to go to good use.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Is there a DeLorean available, so I can take advantage of the program?
Right. Go back in time?
Well, if there's no questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great program. And now we come to council comments, and this evening, Mr. Blevins will start us out.
Okay. First off, thank you all for coming out today. Thank you to Richard for putting the, working on this Vietnam and Beyond Memorial. It means a lot. I know I'm not a veteran, but my father was a Vietnam veteran, and I know he's looking down. Just excited to see this happen. Great job to the residents and businesses on their rewards for beautification. Even if you don't help or do the beautification, clean up things, just any regular day, going down the street, picking up trash, or keeping our city beautiful, and I want to say thank you to two volunteers. After the State of the City, Linda, Linda Gerzick and Nancy Nick, they, there was some debris in the middle by Pine Cross and the Southfield area that was, been there for quite some time, and they went out and cleaned it up. So, it's not, again, it's, you can do it just any other day and all stuff, and it's just trying to make our city a beautiful place to work, live, and play. And then the State of the City, wonderful job, Mayor. It's nice, it was nice to really go and listen to the last four years, what this council has done as a team, and it, it's just wonderful that it's, we're moving forward. It's like I always say, staying positive, and it's just nice to hear all those accomplishments over the last four years. If, in the future, our Allen Park Today Magazine will be coming out, so keep an eye on that. A lot of good information on that. Great job to our Allen Park Jaguars, three and zero, as well as our practice field, Detroit Lions winning. So, good job. Hopefully, we, maybe, just maybe, maybe we'll get to a Super Bowl, but, you know, we'll see. One day at a time. Just, like I said, last, last, the last meeting afterwards, it kind of hit me, because with only for myself, only having a few more meetings, and it's bittersweet. A lot of people still think I'm on, going to be on this ballot, but, you know, no, I'm not, but I appreciate people thinking that, and it just, my advice to all the candidates, and first off, and I'm going to keep saying this until election day, thank you for stepping up 11 residents out of the 28,000 we have stepping up, and this isn't, it's not an easy job. This is a 24-hour job, and when you are... job, and when you are up here, be a team, you're working for the residents, this isn't just a stepping stone thing, this is for the residents, and it's not for the pay, that's for sure, but, you know, good gas money, I guess, but watch out, but it's just one of those things where you're here to work for the residents at the end of the day, represent them, listen, be respectful, and be a great team, because this team up here for the last four years has been wonderful. The department heads, I can't thank every day how much wonderful they do. Again, it's just, I've seen the city going up and down, and remember learning history, and it's just one of those things where, just as I always say, stay positive and work as a team. Lastly, my fellow friend, Councilman Marcos, isn't here to say it, but I asked him what was today's National Chocolate Milkshake Day and National Policewoman's Day. And with that, God bless, see you in a couple weeks, and stay positive, and I yield.
Thank you, Charles. Mr. Lally.
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of agree with Charles, we all gotta work together up here, because it won't be a team if we don't. We appreciate that. I want to congratulate Allen Park Public Schools and Allen Park High School staff, where they ranked second in Down River area schools by U.S. News and Reports. It was very good. I want to thank Richard Yettigan, who came up here, and that's not the first time he came up here, we did a, we did a couple fundraisers for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial and beyond, and the Star, Blue Star Memorial, Champagne and Pelham. I'm pretty sure that Mario Savona is gonna do a good job, because he's one of the guys that helped design that. It's very nice, and I, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a heck of a job, because this Thursday they're gonna pour it. I talked to him today. And I want to thank Jeff O'Reilly, Fire Department, for 25 years' service. Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah.
And Brian Markovich, Police Department, 10 years' service. Thank you very much for those guys. I'll be remiss if I don't say thank you to all the department heads and all in charge. You guys do a great job, and you always be there, because you're all good people, and I respect you guys. Thank you. And that's it. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
All right, so I got, first off, Mr. Scharlein came up for his public comments, he congratulated Chief O'Reilly and Markovich on their retirement. We need at least 10 more years out of Chief O'Reilly. Future Chief O'Reilly.
Ten years.
Come on, you got a, you got an eighth grader. College doesn't pay for itself. Okay. So, I just, this is maybe a common refrain for those of you that are up here with me, but I think one of the true pleasures of this job is to be able to see all the celebrations of our community members that we get to do on a regular basis. Whenever I see at the top, we have presentations, it's always particularly exciting, even though it's not something that directly pertains to our business of the day. Today's no different, and I think that it's, it adds on very nicely to Councilman Blevins' comments, because a lot of, all those people, you know, they're putting all of that time, energy, and money into their, into their properties to, to make this a prettier place to be. Like, you know, that's, that's not something that they have to do, like, you know, we, we have our ordinances, that is the bare minimum, and that's what a lot of people do, and there's nothing wrong with that, but these people are putting that effort into making this a better place. And that goes to our commissioners and our department heads, and our elected officials, and I think it is what makes this an amazing place to live, and why so many people, from so many different walks of life, they grow up here, and they choose to come back. You know, my, my wife was born and raised in Troy, and she is now a transplant, and she, when we have the conversations, this is the place where we want to raise our child, because we have that community around us. We have those people that, you know, I can walk, like, to the next-door neighbor, or a block this way, or a block that way, and we have community, and that is something that I think is truly unique, and it makes me very appreciative. And so, for everybody that's here tonight, thank you so much for all that you do for our city, and for everybody up here, thank you. I'm genuinely appreciative that I have such amazing people to help invest in this place and make this, continue to make this a wonderful place for my son and girl. So, thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
I just wanted to restate, congrats Jeff O'Reilly, 25 years, and also our next chief, and also Officer Markovich, on his 10 years' service to the APBD. Also, you know, he left, but I happened to, had the opportunity to go out to the fundraising motorcycle ride, where it started at the VFW in Southgate. I rode my little dual-sport Honda up there, but I got so intimidated by all the Harley-Davidson motorcycles that I, I just, I couldn't do it. I couldn't bring myself to be, to be that guy and be putzing around in my little dual-sport bike, so I just waved to them as they drove by and heard that rumble of thunder, and then I hopped on my little bike and rode off. But it was, it was, it was nice to see so many people participate, and, I mean, they had a good day, they had a great ride, and, you know, I seen some of the Facebook posts of people, I had Little Caesars when they were ripping by, and everyone was just in awe. For those that have never seen a rally like that, it is a pretty cool thing to witness. So, I was glad that I was able to get out there and just actually wave to them as they left the VFW there in Southgate. Also, wanted just to throw congrats out to Chief Egan on his recent wedding and marriage. Blessings to him and his new wife, Kim, as they begin a life together. And also, I wanted to just give a shout-out to Deb Zettel for all the phenomenal work she did with the Beautification Commission, and all that she does daily, as well as advance, thanks to our city clerk, because he's gonna be busy here in another couple months, so I appreciate that. Also, I just ask for prayers. My father-in-law had some bypass, heart bypass surgery about a week ago, he's having a pretty tough recovery, just ask for your prayers, put in your prayers, hopefully things get a little bit better for him as he recovers from that surgery. With that, thank you, and I yield.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I add one more thing?
You just yielded.
I, I unyield.
Okay.
I saw the generators as well, and I had a lot of questions about them myself. I don't have any information currently. I'll, I'm gonna ask.
I'll give you some.
Because, yeah, because it, I, it was, it's an interesting sight to see when you drive by, wondering what the heck is going on. So, it's not something you see on an everyday basis, so.
Now you yield.
I yield.
You're sure? Mr. Schleck.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I think the theme of the day is definitely beauty and teamwork, so I want to thank all the commissioners and all the citizens and all the businesses that did all the hard work to make their businesses and how homes look as beautiful they are to receive those awards. I think it speaks volumes when you can ride by and just look in our community, pretty beautiful city. I definitely want to give a big congrats to Chief Egan on his wedding. I want to tell Mayor McLeod, I think she did a wonderful job at the state of the city, and I hope that is something that we can make a annual tradition. I definitely liked all the facts and how everyone got together, it's what community's all about. In the course of our life, you know, we come across, we have many titles, title of councilman, father, business manager, et cetera, et cetera, but today is a day where I wear this, I often wear a tie or something to demonstrate or show something. This was what I wore on my wedding day. Today's my wedding day, it's my eighth wedding anniversary. So, as my wife's sitting home, taking care of our sons, Gary Jr., and one of them's probably pulling her hair, or Frankie, that's probably yinking her ankles, I want to say, happy anniversary, brother. I love you. But as I said, there's two themes, beauty is one, teamwork is the other. We on council here have had a different council than most, with two deaths in the council and COVID, global pandemic, once in a lifetime, I hope that holds true, but we were able to get through it, and we are continuing to go through it. So, it's important that we kept, keep our ego in check, and not call each other out, let's be team members and talk to each other, be civil to each other. Because that's important, and it's important for all the candidates that are running to know that, because ultimately, we're up here, as Councilman Blevins put, for the residents. We're not here just to hear our speak, at least I'm not. I definitely would rather be with my wife, celebrating my anniversary, but it was important that I came, do the city business, and made sure things happened, because we have to have compassion, understanding, and talk to each other, because we all have knowledge and do it. No more pettiness, no more whatever between us, we're teammates, it's be teammates. We represent the citizens, let's do that with dignity, all of us, including me, that from time to time, maybe I have stepped out of bounds. And with that, Mayor, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi, I'm sure you may have something to say this evening.
Just a couple things real quick. I want to congratulate all the business and residents that got the awards from the Beautification Commission. It's, it's a wonderful thing to see when you recognize for going above and beyond what most people do. Also, remember the local elections coming up on November 7. Applications for absentee ballots are available. All precincts will be at the community center, and I will be giving out more information next council meeting. So, with that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Mike. I will be brief, because we've covered so many of the things already. We want to congratulate individuals reaching milestone service with us, and we've got some other milestones coming up that we'll address in coming meetings. We already covered the Styrofoam recycling, which I want to remind people, again, is this coming weekend, the September 16th and 17th, from 9:00 to 3:00. And so, everyone knows, all of the surrounding communities have been invited. The Down River Community Conference sent out a blast email to all the participants there, so I'm hoping that we get a wonderful turnout from all the residents, and I am particularly pleased to indicate that in sending one to the city of Dearborn, they are sending two volunteers from their DPS department to help out, so I thought that was a very positive sign. So, hopefully, I know a lot of the other mayors were quite interested in the town supervisors, and I would like to see this become an annual event. It's, it's one where Dart no longer puts a facility in where they collect, there is one in Detroit, which is huge, but you're supposed to be a Detroit resident, and I understand they have a collection facility in Ann Arbor that you can take your material to, but they will charge you. This is free of charge, Dart is bringing in a semi-trailer, hoping we fill it, hoping we have overflow, and they'll come and get it on Monday. It's just a question of reserving. We've got Maiden Michigan coming up, probably be sending out, there'll probably be an email coming out as far as needing volunteers. Feel free to come out and help and meet your friends and neighbors, it's always a fun I think we all know what yesterday was, sitting there looking at the date and thinking that this actually happened 22 years ago, and there are people that we're sitting next to, or that are neighbors, that have no idea as to what happened 22 years ago, because they were just born. But I was reading through some items on Facebook, and it's very clear to me that there are people, it will be indelible in their minds, we will always remember where we were and what was happening, and I hope that is a history lesson that's learned and never repeated. I will probably think of a million other things, but at this point, I'm simply going to ask for adjournment. Mr. Blevins.
Oh, the DTE.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, the DTE. The DTE generators are there because there was apparently a major cable break that was impacting a major section of Taylor and their schools, so they put one of these massive generators by the Sablin Market on Pelham, and they put another one on Moore at Allen, which happens to be right next to former Mayor Matekis's house. And that is keeping the power on while they are replacing this cable. They are aware and have been made aware about the many outages, and in fact, every time one has happened in the area of certain of our businesses, I have communicated that this is really something that needs to be looked into, because after it's happened four or five times, and we've got businesses that are, you know, I'm sure that insurance does not cover everything, and when you're tossing out food left and right and you're losing business, this is not something that can be tolerated, but those semi-trailers are there while they're repairing this ruptured cable, so thank you for reminding me. I knew I was gonna forget something.
I was gonna let you out of here.
Okay, so we had a motion by Mr. Blevins to adjourn, second by Mr. Lally. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, we are adjourned at 7:06. Have a good evening.